Welcome, everybody. We please stand for the Fledge of Deputies.
The Fledge of Deputies to the right of the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Go vote, please.
Councilmember Shaffer?
Here.
Didio?
Here.
Matola?
Here.
Clay? Absinthe? Wendis?
Here.
Wakefield?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Tedford?
Here.
Gesse?
Here.
LeTender? Absinthe and LeVette?
Here.
Mr. Mary, for the form.
Thank you so much. So at seven thirty-five our public hearing begins. You're going to start rotating a little bit tonight. We're going to go into some of my comments and then exactly seven thirty-five we're going to stop and go into the public hearing. Actually, why don't we start with Steve Wakefield and Polly Shaffer to report on the summer carnival?
The carnival?
Is that any?
Um... This was an amazing event. I mean, we've been through another awful lot of events together in this town and groups of individuals, but without having a whole lot of idea of what to expect except possible big crowds, well, wow. Biggest crowds ever by probably a factor of fifty to seventy percent. The intake of cash is fifty percent bigger than anything we've ever had before. Uh, the money that we're going to be able to give to the charities that are involved here is about sixty-five percent more than has ever been before. Um, but there's, we get asked questions by the J.I. over the good things about the carnival just before it happened. And we said that the really good thing that makes us good for everybody is the people are so well behaved. Same thing, you wouldn't believe this. We had a couple of events, one fistfight and one person got sick. That was it. And we did have a police officer there for fighting. But if the amount of people in there was controlled perfectly, Cerv played a big part in that. We had our own, uh, security people. And I would have to say, I mean, Polly's going to have one event, maybe the closest thing, but I think that everything we hoped for and planned for that could possibly happen and the contingencies we put up against the amount of people that show up, all came true, but we were ready for it.
Good. Paul?
It was a super year. Um, I have to thank all of the people that sponsored our carnival rides and all the people that worked with us. It was quite a thing when we went down on Sunday before the carnival and parking lot and the field where we were putting all of the carnival rides was pretty well flooded. And we weren't sure whether we were going to get it dried out enough to have the carnival. The owner of the carnival was kind of leery because his equipment is pretty heavy and sitting there and it's known for being able to hold a lot of water there and not drain off. But thanks to Public Works and the guys who were super, they brought down big pumps and cleared it all off because of the two rivers that joined, excuse me, joined together and flooded the whole area. But the people in this town came out. I think they were ready to be out and enjoying themselves after being shut down for so long. And like I say, the sponsors that sponsored the carnival rides, many of them showed up. And the kids were just excited to be there. We did wonderful on ticket sales, food sales, everything. And I may be hoping we're not going to do quite as well next year because we're all going to be a year older, but if they show up, we'll be there to serve them like we always have.
Thank you, Paul. All right, we're going to stop and we're going to move into the public hearing at this point, and I am going to call the public hearing to order. Can I have the clerk please read the legal notice?
This was posted in the outside of the square of Town Hall on July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, and on the Town website on July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. It was advertised in the Journal of Quire on August eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Legal notice, Town of Vernon, Public Hearing Town Council. This is to give notice that at this regular meeting of July twenty, twenty-twenty-one, the Vernon Town Council scheduled two public hearings to be held on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, in the third floor council chambers of the Town Hall, Mora Building, Fourteen Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut. The first public hearing will take place at seven thirty-five P.M. regarding an ordinance entitled possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property; smoking and vaping prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. Repealing ordinance number seventy-four entitled possession, consumption, distribution, or sale of alcoholic beverages on school grounds in school buildings prohibited, and ordinance number two ninety-five entitled possession or consumption of alcoholic liquors in town parks and recreation areas prohibited. The second public hearing will take place immediately following the conclusion of the first public hearing regarding an ordinance entitled possession of alcoholic liquor and cannabis in public areas, highways, and parking areas. Repelling ordinance number one ninety-five entitled possession of alcoholic liquor in public areas, highways, and parking areas. Copies of the proposed ordinances are available at the Town Clerk's Office, Fourteen Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, and on the Town's website, www.vernon-ct.co/legal-notices. Karen C. Dagels, C.C.T.C., Vernon Town Clerk, dated at Vernon, Connecticut, this twenty-first day of July, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up for public comment, but I'm going to make a comment first. So when we look at the legalization of marijuana, when it was passed, the state of Connecticut, uh, when it was voted in, basically prohibited anybody from smoking marijuana in these state parks or state property. So they did that ahead of time, but they left it up to the towns to look at their own town parks. And during the Fourth of July fireworks, we ended up having people smoking up at the park with families sitting close by. We had people smoking marijuana down here in downtown, same thing. You know, if somebody wants to use the, you know, this is a public scene, we already know secondhand smoke is dangerous, no matter what it is. And people have a right to be protected from that. Anybody that wants to smoke at their house, that's fine. On their property, that's fine. But we need to protect the public, and that's why we're here tonight. Right? And is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this first ordinance? Karen? Oh, there's, do we have a list?
I'm on the list.
Where is Melissa's?
Right here.
Mary Ann? Mary Ann LeVette, one eighty-three Bolton Road in Vernon, Connecticut. I am here this evening speaking on two concerns. The first being the new ordinances we will be voting on this evening. I cannot support these ordinances as written. I believe these need to be pulled and researched. They appear to be conflicting with the newest legislation passed. My fear is harm to the town. I cannot pass something that may end up in the court system. To think of the taxpayers' money being spent on an ordinance in court that we cannot defend is frustrating and hopeless. I will be voting against the ordinance as currently written. I am still encouraging everyone to reach out to your health care provider, doctor, P.A., or pediatrician for advice on the COVID- nineteen vaccine. The last statistics have revealed ninety-four...
You have to stay.
Oh, are you going to have another?
Just on the ordinances.
Thank you.
You can speak again when we're doing the public...
Thank you.
This is formal, sorry. All right. Do we know who's second on the list? Do we have a list?
There's only two of us.
Oh, okay. That makes it easy.
Hi, I'm Julie Anderson. I'm with the Department of Art Return.
You got, there's a button that says push?
Great. Hi, I'm Julie Anderson. Uh, I'm in one-one-zero-zero Art Return, Department six thirteen. I'm here to speak on the two ordinances that are being raised this evening, specifically the first one. The second one, which is the possession of alcoholic liquor and cannabis in public areas, highways, and parking areas, I don't find any issue with. I think it's well alignment with Public Act twenty-one-one, passed in special session. It's the first ordinance that I have an issue with. It's possession, consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis provided in town-owned or town-leased property; smoking and vaping prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. Um, it's a filling act which, uh, specifically relates to alcohol, and this one is adding cannabis into it. I believe that it was potentially mis-drafted, um, to be parallel with the alcoholic statute or ordinance that currently exists in town as the alcoholic statute or ordinance currently prohibits the possession of alcohol on town-owned property. And I think that is very good and that the town has the, um, statutory support for that ban. However, the possession of cannabis is not something that the Public Act twenty-one-one granted town rights to ban. The state was the one who passed the possession of cannabis and consumption, both of them, but granted the town permission to town all over the state to ban consumption specifically, not the possession. The current ordinance as written in section D of the ordinance is written possession and consumption of cannabis prohibited. It shall be unlawful to possess, burn, sell, consume, sell, or distribute cannabis on any kind of town-owned or town-leased property. I really have one issue, and that is the word possession, both in the title of that section and in possess in the list of vague years with cannabis that are being banned by the town. I think that it's misaligned with, uh, section eighty-four of Public Act twenty-one-one, which if you take a look at subsection, I'm not going to do Roman numerals, but XB-one of the section, uh, it eliminates the, uh, language either carrying, which is a reference to, uh, town's ability to ban the carrying of marijuana, and substitutes it with burning. So it took out the language about carrying, added in language about burning, which clarifies that possession is not within the town's capability to ban and that, uh, possession or, but that consumption is within the town's ability. So I think that it was potentially mis-drafted. Uh, if not, I too am worried about the town's likelihood of incurring legal fees for, uh, for who to fight this to get it in alignment with this, the state law. Um, so I hope that it will be reconsidered and not pass in its current form. Uh, if it is to be passed as anything, I'm hoping that the words possession can be struck from section D of the first ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this tonight? You can just, Dave, Dave and Andrews.
Janero Gonzalez, Alphon. One hundred and seventy West Main Street. How y'all doing today? Mary and Miss LeVette, how you doing today? Anyway, um, the only thing that I have a situation with is we had a lot of individuals in town that smoked marijuana. Okay? Not just us individuals alone. There's some white people too that speak around and smoke too. Okay? That is no, I'm sorry, I don't need to say that, you know, but it's true, you know? But you have to find a recreation spot for individuals that do smoke on state property since the state made it for them to smoke, you know? If they make a recrea, I have a medical marijuana card, which I can do what I can, what I want with mine, okay? I can even carry up to two and a half ounces. They can carry, I believe, one and a half ounces, people that can purchase it. There's no stores in Connecticut. Everybody has to go to Massachusetts. Massachusetts is making all the money right now, you see? But now you have to think as a community, if you make this mandatory, there's a lot of the children that's going to do it regardless. You know, you have to think about that psychological evaluation, you know? You know, you have to think what they use this for. You know, if you find a certain spot for them that could be recreational, they're only there for individuals that are adults, even with the parents that give up their kids, you know, with supervision and permission, you know, because there's certain kids that are also approved with a medical marijuana card. All right? You just can't do, I mean, to me, that's like double jeopardy. You know, you pass something and you pass that. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not fifty-fifty, you know? There's nowhere for people that could smoke, where are they going to smoke? What about a bum on the street? Where could he, where does he sleep? Near the creek of the water behind my house? Because there's a lot of them right there. I live, I give them a lot of rice and chicken. All right? You know? What about they get caught smoking? They go to jail. They don't have a place to stay. So you have to find a spot where they can, it can be recreational in town, somewhere you can have somewhere open, you know, where, you know, you can go there and have your fun with respect. Maybe throw some CCTV cameras on the top there, watch them or something, you know? Something like that? I don't know. Just an idea, because there's a lot of people that do smoke, sir. You know, but this is not my agenda. My agenda is the other one. But, you know, I'm just letting you know, I do have my medical marijuana card, and I feel that this is going to be double jeopardy for a lot of people. A lot of people will go to jail over this. So I don't feel this right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nobody will go to jail over an ordinance violation? All right, anybody else? Mr. Wakefield?
Mike Winkler, Twenty Hundred Drive, we're, just want to provide some context. The state of Connecticut, under our constitution, our state constitution, reserves all power to itself and delegates power to the towns, like including Zouyin. And the towns are not able to write an ordinance that is against legislation or legislative intent. As we heard, the words laden or carrying in the statute, which gave down that power, was now changed to burning. Why that was done was marijuana is now legal. Carrying an ounce and a half of marijuana in your pocket is the same as carrying a pack of cigarettes, and you can't outlaw that. The state has said you can't outlaw that. The state has amended the law, so you can't outlaw that. You can control burning and consumption, but you can't control carrying. The legislature does not want this law to become punitive, specifically trying to avoid that. Now, I know that Vernon has a tendency to go its own way sometimes, and sometimes that's genius, like the voting on the budget. Other times it's foolish and doomed from the start, like not allowing people to use the Secretary of State's ballot box. This is going to be one of those doomed from the start. There's not only a lot of people, end of A.C.L.U., who are going to attack this if we violate the state law, but also, um, if it's ever used, it'll be thrown out in court because it's clearly a violation of the state law and legislative intent. Again, you can regulate burning use, you cannot regulate holding it. So if somebody goes into Town Hall and they have two joints in their pocket and it comes out of their pocket when they're paying something at the Town Clerk's office, you cannot charge them with the violation of an ordinance. If somebody is parked at Henry Park, and for whatever reason their car is searched, and you find three ounces in their locked glove box, you cannot charge them because marijuana is legal. And I don't know why the concept of legal doesn't seem to strike home, but anyways. So I just don't want Vernon to appear like some sort of backwater where they do as they please regardless of state law. I would prefer if you consulted with their town attorney and just removed all mention of carrying or possession. Thank you.
Anybody else? Your David Andrews.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ariana Yanez Antias, Twenty-sixth Ave Drive, Connecticut. I think my biggest concern with the ordinance as written is that individuals, uh, prior to the legalization in Connecticut, were issued, uh, the right to use marijuana as medicinal property. And for individuals who need to carry that medicine on them, uh, I feel like the, the town is overreaching in this ordinance and penalizing individuals who, you wouldn't penalize somebody for having Advil in their purse. Um, and unfortunately, whether you agree or disagree, it is legalized medicine, and we need to respect that and learn to find other ways in which we can work together to build our community and make our community safer spaces, but unfortunately, it is, it is considered a medicine.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Hearing done, I am going to close, or I'm going to adjourn the public hearing, and we're going to move into public hearing number two. We, we're going to move into the second reading.
All right, Your Honor, the council waives, this is a motion, the Town Council waives the second reading of the legal notice.
Second.
Second by Mary. Essentially, we read the whole thing in the first ordinance, uh, so we can just, we can just take a vote on the waiving of those matters. Paul is a pair. You announce. And we're going to move right into public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the, uh, second public hearing? David Andrews? This is still on the marijuana.
So marijuana separate with this?
That's coming after this.
So I don't want to speak about it.
Okay, that was marijuana. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what is.
All right. Sorry.
Thanks. Right. Is there anybody who wants to speak on, uh, public hearing number two? Okay. All right. Then, uh, I'm going to adjourn this public hearing as well, and we're going to move in back into our regular meeting. Right. We're going to move on to citizens' forum at this point. Mary Ann?
I spoke earlier concerning another, um, concern I have within town. I am still encouraging everyone to reach out to your health care provider, your doctor, your P.A. or your pediatrician for advice in the COVID- nineteen vaccine. The latest statistics have revealed ninety-four to ninety-seven percent in the hospitals or on ventilators are unvaccinated. The Delta variant has also shown a younger group of individuals who are experiencing life-changing events. I love life, and I think it's worth living. I will keep speaking of the importance of the COVID- nineteen vaccine, even if I save only one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Sure.
Counsel, how are you all doing today? My name is Janero in Vernon, West Main Street. Today I'm coming back from...
Just give us the number of this man.
One thirty-seven, thank you. I don't know that personally. Now, last time I was here, I was told that there was no nanoparticles, nanotechnology inside the vaccine. Right here, this was sent to the President of the United States in October twenty-twenty, National Nanotechnology Initiative Supplement to the President of two thousand twenty-one Budget. Let's see who else knows about this nanotechnology in this vaccine. Ms. Mary Ann, I also want to mention nineteen sixty-four New York Times versus Sullivan. A lot of the federal bureau of the DOC, D.O.E., know about this technology. I have a patent here, okay? It's patent European number, uh, E.P. three-one-seven-two-three-one-nine-B-one. The individual owner of this proprietorship that owned this virus is the Pure Bright Institute. His name is Bill Gates and Malina Gates Foundation. When they did this SARS-CoV-2, the guy that did it, which he was from the Chinese Academy of Agriculture and Science, he said that when they manipulated SARS-CoV-2, when they took the spike protein out of it, he said that the development and the characterization of the recombinant infection is ronchitis virus, expressing that the epidemic region of S-one gene of H-one-twenty strength, which is in all the vaccines. Ms. Mary Ann LeVesque?
Listen, you got it.
Nice, I'm just, I'm just trying to feel.
You're addressing the whole council?
I'm addressing the whole council, but she, she took the initiative of saying there was no nanotechnology inside of it.
But you got to address the whole town.
Okay, so I'm addressing the whole town now. Vernon, Connecticut, my name is Janero Gonzalez, and I worry about what's going on. I have proof and evidence that the vaccine has nanotechnology and it has chemicals in the vaccines that will cause harm to you. It has sodium chloride, ethanol, critic acid, monohydrate. The side effects are tremendous to your health. It would actually hurt you more. The lady that created this mRNA, her herself had cancer. She had to create mRNA to manipulate the immune system so it could bypass the immune system so it could get you sick with a small part of the virus. This is proof and evidence here from federal website government officials stating that this here is the virus, the test itself, okay? It also does, not only that, before you take the vaccine, they're supposed to read to you the concerns and the conditions and the situations that can happen to you. There's a contract you're supposed to sign, Vernon, Connecticut, okay? If you take the vaccine, you're supposed to sign a contract before you take it. The vaccine, before you take it, it will tell you that, they're supposed to read you this, numbness of type feeling, swelling, rapid weight gain, muscle twitching, or cramps, fast or slow heartbeat or rate, confusion or mood changes, bloody or tear the stool, severe stomach pains. Grandma has severe stomach pains, right? Ongoing diarrhea, right? She took the vaccine? Okay, seizure. Seizure, was just in the hospital. Let's go to the other ones. Fast heartbeat highs, itching, or, right? There's a lot of side effects, but you're not telling the people about mRNA and the lipid nanotechnology cell that comes from the federal government. Without these lipid shells, there would be no mRNA vaccines for COVID- nineteen without nanotechnology. Without nanotechnology, there is no COVID- nineteen. You see? Nanotechnology, biotechnology. Okay? Not only that, they even stated right here that the Viroseria vaccine is made from the virus Chado X-one, a weakened version of the common cold virus, adenovirus, which is the virus itself. Okay, people? You got to read between the lines, all right? These right here, and this paper here, I really couldn't really read too much. I didn't want to go about my business, but it seems people get, okay? There's a certain amount of money, people get paid for taking the vaccine. This is, I got a few cousins that took the vaccine, and they wanted to know how much they got paid for taking the vaccine, because they didn't know that they actually, people got paid to take the vaccine. So if they're really concerned about, they're concerned about all this proof I have here. It's very concerning, because you could be held responsible, antrocity against the United States of America to the American... United States of America to the American people violation of the Constitution.
Senator, time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
GOP baby. Thank you, Ted Cruz, Senator Paul Lovey.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in the citizen's forum? Nobody else? Thank you. We're going to go back to Mayor's report. I'm going to start by, first I wanted to thank Steve Wakefield, Deputy Mayor, for standing in for me while I was on vacation with the family. Appreciate it. Tom, do you want to give us a report on National Night Out?
Thank you, Your Honor. National Night Out was really a fun community event. It was the opportunity for us to reacquaint ourselves with our friends and neighbors. We had a really big crowd at the Latin Mall parking lot, where people were able to say hello, talk to one another, greet one another, and hug one another. We gave out over three hundred packets of school supplies to our children, distributed over one thousand two hundred hot dogs, eleven hundred bags of chips, cartons and bottles of juice and water, eight hundred bars of ice cream, and most importantly, over forty-five vaccinations for COVID, which was really impressive, and we thank the town very much for that. It was an evening that was really filled with a lot of joy. You know, when you think of the partnership with the police department, the chief being there, the police officers being there, Mike Anthony of the police department did a wonderful job, and the fire department. You know, we were at Ann Mall for the first time this year, and there was a lot of things that were different. Jeff Bodis and the Olsen family were just fantastic, allowing us to use that lot. But one of the things it does not have is power and water. We wanted the bounce house and the foam machines that kids really enjoy to be part of this. My wife had a great idea of using one of the pumper trucks from the fire department to provide some power and water for the foam machine. I talked to the chief, and the first thing he said was, yeah, I think we can do that. Well, after thinking about it, we had to do some changes because of the water in the pumper, but we were able to use one of the ATV fumers and the generators to get that going. Marty, the parks director, is always fantastic. Dwight was great, especially with water. Mike pulled our riverheads out of the fire by providing us, getting more water to us that night, which was really, really important. Michelle Hill, Jen, the library, the cornerstone people, there were just so many organizations, over thirty-five organizations were there and participating, and it was just so great. At one time, at one point, Jeff came up to me and said, you know, Tom, the merchants are really annoying, because you've taken over all the parking spaces and you view seats parallel. Mike, Jeff, what can I say? I mean, it's a great event all year. Couple hours later, he came up to me and says, you know, the merchants are really happy. They haven't had this much business in their stores in years on Tuesday night.
Thank you.
So it was really a big turn of event and really a great, great event turning around. I thank the town, I thank all the departments that were there, and everyone, because it was fun, and we really had a lot of support, a lot of community, and it was just a great night. Your Honor, thank you, thank you all for being part of the event. It was just fun. Thank you.
I heard it was fantastic. Sorry I missed it. All right. You know, it seems now it's my turn to make a report here. I'm going to correct something that was said by Mr. Wakefield when he was up there, where he said the town prevented people from using the voting boxes provided by the state. It wasn't a matter of preventing people, until it was voted on by the legislature, which I voted for, it wasn't legal. There's a difference between putting a box out, it's not legal, and actually voting and making it legal. So I'm going to correct that statement that was made. And, you know, that's a statement that's been pushed for some time now, you know, and my other hat has, within the state, made that legal, and that's when we put it out. So people trying to play politics when we're talking about one thing and then throwing a jab at another, it's not right, and I am correct in that. Let's move on. Shakespeare in the Park. Anybody who went from the town council? A couple people? Shakespeare in the Park, basically that event was held at the back parking lot of the library. The second performance was held inside the library due to the weather conditions. I was able to catch the wind inside. Both events were very successful and further supported the community's interest in the arts of Vernon. Over a hundred and thirty-eight people attended the performance. A crowdfunding campaign raised a total of fifteen thousand in generous donors and a match from Sustainable Connecticut. Thank you to everyone involved. It was a great performance for those that were able to make it. As part of our Sustainable Connecticut recertification, the town has begun the process of benchmarking its energy consumption in town buildings. In partnership with Vernon Public Schools, the Energy Improvement District, UConn Finance Administration, War Patrol Control Authority, and Public Works, for information will follow on that. Update, phase one on the Wintmere Fields project. If anybody's driven by, you can see some works being done. The vote works is removing the topsoil from one of, for phase one, it's one of the fields, and this is being done with a new bulldozer. Field has been watered down and other measures have been implemented for dust control. The next step is meeting with engineering to begin the field design plans. Basically, they got to strip all the topsoil, got to mold the field, and then put the topsoil back on. I don't think they're expecting that much topsoil. In some places, it was over five feet of topsoil. So it's been farmed for many, many years. Somebody drove by and wanted to buy it on the spot. We said no, by the way. So that work is being done, and we plan on having a ceremony with the town council and the community stakeholders in the near future. Stay tuned for more information, and we will keep you informed of progress of the project as we move forward. We can expect that, hopefully that first field to be done and grass roaming by the end of the year, that's the plan. Dog Park, Rockville High School track and field, the new field is complete, a new rubber service being applied to the track. In fact, the rubber service is there, it only has to be painted now. Bouncing on the field and track has been installed. Stay tuned for more information on our rigging cutting with the Board of Education and the town council. Citizens block, we are keeping a close eye on the building material pricing, which appear to be coming down. I bought a two-by-four for four dollars and twenty cents the other day. That's proof. I got to build some for my teacher's classroom, my wife's classroom. If this trend continues, this will allow us to resume work sooner than later. Update on the drainage issue of the dog park, the sink hole issue has been resolved and repaired, and the park has been fully reopened. We will be presented to the town council on days to come information about the distribution of the American Rescue Funds. Presently, we work in the local nonprofits to identify needs, and we'll report to the council recommendations. Vernon Voice Magazine, our next magazine will be published around mid-November. This edition will include articles from the Vernon Volunteer Collaborative, as well as lots of updates on projects going on around town. Eagle Scout on Sundays, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, I attended Eagle Scout Court of Honor at the American Legion Post on West Road, Vernon. Curtis Rogie, who assisted the Rockville High School Music Department staff in categorizing and organizing decades of sheet music. I guess there were nine hundred, and each one has different parts for each part of the, for each of the instruments. It's quite a job. Zachary Larson refurbished, repaired, painted picnic tables for the American Legion members to use during their events, which includes fixing and building benches. I want to thank and congratulate both of the Eagle Scouts. Donation to the Social Services Department Back to School Program, the Rockville Elks Club donated five thousand dollars to the program this year to support the purchase of clothing and school supplies for nearly twenty years. School supplies. For nearly twenty years, the community has generously contributed to this program to assist Vernon families. Last year, due to COVID, the program was transitioned to providing gift cards that were distributed to Vernon families. This year, the Social Services Department has already received donations of thirty-five hundred from the community and a thousand from the Salvation Army. The Elks donation will allow more children to start the year off with new clothing and shoes. I mean, half the town, I want to thank the Elks and all those who donated to this very important program. We were going to talk to Matt Helm today, our new Social Services Director, but he couldn't make it, so he will be at September weekend. All right.
Your Honor, about Mary Oliver.
Oh, do you have the information, Tom?
We sat to announce that Mary Oliver, former town council member, passed away this past Friday, and she had a fairly long sad illness, and there'll be a debatuary in the paper on Saturday with all the arrangements.
Maybe it was on the town council, I said this to Mary, and she was funny, and she's a good person. So all our prayers are with her. See, why don't we take a second? Let's take a couple minutes, a little timeout. She was a good person, she'll be missed. How about a moment of silence? Thank you. All right, the executive session, we're going to save it to the end. All right, let's go to, second, Steve.
Your Honor, ruling consented general.
Second by Polly. Are we pulling any? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Steve, your business number one.
Your Honor, the town council hereby approves the disposal of assets of the Vernon Board of Education as disclosed on the request for disposal of fixed asset forms.
Seconded by Polly. Any questions? No. All those in favor? Unanimous. Steve, your business number two.
This doesn't affect the motion. Being resolved, the town council authorized the mayor's annualization campaign to execute the necessary paperwork to make application for and receive Youth Service Bureau cost-sharing funds from the State Department of Children and Families in an amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Was that number correct, twenty-one thousand? Hold on a second.
That is not the correct number.
Can you give us the correct number?
Your Honor, just make aware that the number of revenue is wrong, the proper number of the show that writes twenty-one thousand is three hundred and twenty-one.
Through the mayor, that is, that is part of it. The total amount in the motion is thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two.
Then we use thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two.
Who seconded that? Polly, you accept the second on the direction? All right, so the number's thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. I forgot to mention before we got into that, you somehow there was a mix-up in the transfer of documents, and the new one is in the table front, you guys. All right, any questions on this? Michelle is here. All right.
Of course.
To you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. Michelle, always a pleasure to have you down here. Would you explain that the money is to be used for?
Through the mayor, through the mayor, yes. So we use these funds, this is a grant we've been receiving for years. We use these funds to support the wages for our part-time assistant coordinator who runs our after-school program. She supports our summer youth program. We also use it for wages for our youth workers. There's money left over for supplies, a membership fee to CYSA, and some food costs and cellphone costs.
Thank you. Your Honor, some people looking through.
Through the mayor, they could not stay, so in that year at this moment, they had to go.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any other questions?
Through the mayor. Hi, Michelle. So in reading in advance, I was a little confused, does this money come in advance of them getting paid for the year, or does it come after, at the end of the year?
Through the mayor, so it does seem to come a little bit later. It is for this fiscal year, July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So the grant is a little bit later getting out, but the funds will be used for this year.
And when will we receive that?
Through the mayor. When we send in the application, I imagine it'll be a couple weeks after that.
Thank you.
Your Honor, did you have a question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I had a comment. I thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all you do for the youth of our community. I've seen the program in action, and it absolutely benefits so many children in our community, and I want to thank you for going for this grant every year to supplement all the money that's needed for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Tom?
Thank you, Your Honor. Michelle, thank you for being here, it's always, it's a pleasure. How is this money requested? Do you fill out a grant form, and how is it based? Is it based on the number of children or cost that you make to pay?
Through the mayor, it is a formula that the state works out with communities. Not every community does receive this grant, but Vernon has for years. I'm sure it is population-based. I'm not sure, through the mayor, the next part of your question, how does it, how do they get paid?
No, just basically, was the grant process that you used, what was the process?
Through the mayor, so there's RFP put out by the Department of Children and Families, and then we fill out the application. It's non-competitive, so as long as we fill out the application and do the required recording, we're eligible for these funds.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to request a five-minute break.
Second by Polly. Five-minute break, guys. For the patients, that's the funny thing, when I went out and I did an interview with Channel sixty-one prior to coming in here, and I specifically stated that, you know, possession was not supposed to be part of this bill, and, you know, possession, we can say this is our building, we don't want you bringing it in here, but there's no criminal offense. We can ask you to leave, that's up to us, but as far as a criminal offense, that was not the intention here. But we're going to correct that in the first ordinance as we go through them right now. Steve? All right, the actual ordinance is number one. Ordinance number one, Steve?
Your Honor, the town council, consistently check their five, sections four and six of the Vernon Town Charter, hereby approve the ordinance entitled, ordinance number to be determined, and ordinance entitled possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property, smoking and drinking prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property, repealing ordinance number seventy-four entitled possession, consumption, distribution, or sale of alcoholic beverages on school grounds and school buildings prohibited, and ordinance number two ninety-five entitled possession or consumption of alcoholic wickers in town parks and recreation areas prohibited.
Seconded by Polly. We want to make a correction on this, and this is going to be under this ordinance, it's on line D. I want to remove three words from there. Possession. Possession and, and then possesses, is the other word. Everybody see what we're talking about? Oh, wait till you get there.
Mayor, could you tell us what page you're on?
I'm waiting for this document.
There's three pages.
On the third page. Last page, the last page.
D. Does it need D?
He isn't talking.
Okay.
It's on the third page, that first one. D. Third page, D, is it?
No question. We have the word possession in a number of places. Section one dash A says possession, consumption, distribution. Should possession be removed from that also?
Well, possession and consumption of alcoholic liquors is different than the possession of the marijuana, is what we're talking about here. The town attorney basically said that's the only spot we have to move it.
Possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis. Well, we shouldn't be removing possession. Yeah. Your Honor.
Wait for it, Tom.
I would feel much more comfortable if we tabled this and had it rewritten so that we clearly see it, because there are a couple of places where it does say possession.
Tell me where you're looking at. Look, you can look to the mic.
Okay, this is the header. It says, "Our hereby repeal and following is substituted, new of," and let's see. I'm not sure, is it which page this is?
There's three pages, so two, page two. Okay.
So, Lou, it's, "Our hereby repeal and following is substituted, new of." It says possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property; smoking and vaping prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. We get possession of alcoholic liquor, but then it also says about cannabis.
All right, so you want the title changed as well?
I think we should change it as well, yes.
Why don't we do possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor in town-owned or town-leased property? And consumption of cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. We'll do two separate sentences there.
I think so.
Yep. Possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and consumption of cannabis, you know, comma, and possession, I mean, and consumption of cannabis prohibited in town. This is the way.
I think it's fine if you do it in the two sentences, through the mayor as the...
Two sentences, it's separated.
If you want to. In an abundance of caution.
Yeah. Like you said, then go down to D, possession and, and possesses.
Your Honor, also, I have a question about CBC products, CBD products. They have cannabis in them, but possession is a medical situation in many cases. Would that be, if someone consumes or uses cannabis?
CBD is different than cannabis. CBD doesn't have the, it's called CBD because it doesn't over a certain percentage of THC within the product. Cannabis is definitely different from CBD. There, I think that's... All right, anybody else see anything? I think those two corrections, you know, are the ones we were looking for.
Excuse me? Would you be able to read?
Steve, you want to make the motion of the corrections?
And you'll read the new title?
What's that?
You will read the new title off the ordinance?
Um, I can read. I can, I can. It's not the title, it's the subtitle on page two, where it says possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. So it's the title on the substituted language. So it's basically going to say possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor in town-owned or town-leased property. Then the second sentence will say consumption, consumption cannabis, oh, I'm sorry. Possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. That's the first sentence. The second is consumption of cannabis prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. And then smoking and vaping prohibited in town-owned or town-leased property. So that's the title. And then these, yes.
I think, you know, I know it changed the body part or makes some difference, but I think the title is still misleading. It's the same title, the ordinance name, it still says possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis, and I think it should...
What do you, which word is that?
Right at the top of the ordinance. Ordinance number blank, and ordinance entitled possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor. Shouldn't that change too? I think the same, you know, either two paragraphs are put in, and, comma, consumption of cannabis prohibited in town.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
It should be sent to...
So that title's going, that change is going to be on the main title and the secondary cover. All right? And then the, then my D, we're removing possession and, and then possesses. Okay? Steve, you want to make that motion?
As you said, it was...
Seconded by Paulie. Right. So first and second on the passage with the corrections. Any other questions on this? Do we need two separate votes? Do we need to vote on the changes and then vote on the main body, or voting with the changes? Twice? All right, so this first vote is just on the changes, guys. All those in favor of the changes? Unanimous. Okay, now we're back to the main body. Any questions on the main ordinance itself? No? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, Steve?
The town council, consistent with chapter five, sections four and six of the Vernon Town Charter, hereby moves to approve the ordinance entitled, ordinance number to be determined, and ordinance entitled possession of alcoholic liquor and cannabis in public areas, highways, and parking areas; repealing ordinance number one ninety-five, entitled possession of alcoholic liquor in public areas, highways, and parking areas.
Seconded by Paulie. One more second. Hold on a second, Tom. Lou, this whole, the second ordinance is all on possession?
Excuse me?
This whole second ordinance, is it all on possession?
The possession part comes into play with the alcoholic liquor, not with an open container of alcoholic liquor.
Right.
But the possession does not, is not prohibited for cannabis or smoking.
So we have to remove it in cannabis. How about the main body of that?
Well, it doesn't say that it's prohibited in the title, but you can, if you want to clarify the title, that's...
You know, take a five-minute break. I want to clarify this. This ordinance is absolutely correct. The title and subtitles are both wrong, so we're going to correct the titles, but the body itself is correct. And the title should read possession of alcoholic liquor and cannabis, possession of alcoholic liquor and consumption of cannabis in public areas, highways, parking areas, is that title. And so we're just adding consumption of cannabis. You got that? And then it's again on page two, the short title, it's the exact same thing. It's the possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and its consumption of cannabis. And if you read the body of the ordinance, it is correct in that. So, Steve, you want to make the motion to correct that?
So Lou, Your Honor, the way we're on, but first, the second line in that in section A.
Where are you talking?
Short title. Second line, possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cannabis.
So the darkened part really wasn't the title. It's the short title is what we're going by, but both of those lines should actually read the same.
Yes.
You're right. So if it's going to be in there, we should have both of it. Do you see that? So if you look at the short title under A on page two, right above that line is a darkened line. Just do the same thing with consumption of. Got it? What's that?
Could you just read it again, please?
Yep, so it's going to say, on the darkened one, it's on the top of page two, it says possession of alcoholic liquor and consumption of cannabis in public areas, highways, parking areas. And then the short title says the exact same thing. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the body of this says that. So we're making, you're making the motion to change? Tom?
Yes.
As just discussed, so move.
Second. Seconded by Paulie. All right, any other questions on the correction? Again, the body's correct, is correct. All right, all those in favor of the correction? Unanimous. All right, now we'll move on to the main body again. Any questions on the main body? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Paulie.
We will be getting a corrected copy?
Yes, we all get the corrected copies, yeah.
And we get, that is for the next meeting or prior to that? In case somebody's asking us questions, the sooner we can get a corrected copy would be...
Yeah, we'll send something out to you. We'll do it, we'll get it sent out to you immediately.
Thank you.
Yep. But basically, if anybody asks you a question, it's supposed to be consumption.
I haven't told you.
It's supposed to be consumption. Like I said, I gave an interview before I actually walked in here, and it was consumption, not possession. So, all right. Channel sixty-one reporter said it was a false order. All right, we are going to, let's do the minutes first. Let's just do those, and then we'll go into the executive session.
The town council waives a reading of the minutes of the regular town council meeting on July twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and that minister said meeting be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Paulie. Any corrections or deletions? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, Steve, executive session one. Oh, hold on one second. We are pulling executive session number three. So we're only doing three. We're not doing all four. Bree has to, we need some time to prepare. All right, let's see.
The town council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut general statutes, one dash one, two, hereby moves to move to executive session to discuss personnel and invites Michael J. Caro, town administrator, and John Mass, assistant town administrator, to attend.
Seconded by Paulie. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, let's go, guys. We'll be back.
Properly known as fourteen Laurel Street, Vernon, Connecticut, to the purchase and sale of the unit dated March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, five and ten in town in Vernon, Vernon No. One LLC and Vernon No. Two LLC.
Seconded. Seconded by Mike. Anybody? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. And then the other is the resolution.
Resolved. Michael J. Caro is directed to execute and file such application to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional amendments to execute such other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town.
Second.
Mary. All right, any questions on the resolution? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right, Steve? Seconded by Paulie. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Your Honor.